We please rise for the prayer. Dear God, as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which we will be for the good of the city. We will also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Now I'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and...
Roll call.
Mayor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Martin.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Malinazzo.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Nine present.
Nine present. Thank you and welcome everyone to the first meeting of the season of the year. First item on the agenda is mayor's business from the prior meeting to citation to the Four Seasons Restaurant in recognition of the 25th anniversary. Mr. Bernato here?
Yes.
Will you please rise to the podium, please? Before I read it, there's a motion to accept and place this on file by Counselor Belanger, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed. Citation: Be it hereby known to all that the City of Lowell and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby offers its sincere congratulations to the Four Seasons Restaurant and the Bernato family upon the restaurant's 25th anniversary. For a quarter of a century, George Bernato and his family have given Lowellians and visitors to the city a warm, friendly spot to gather with family and friends while enjoying homemade Portuguese and American comfort foods. In addition to filling the community's bellies, the restaurant's owners and staff have always given back to the community, most notably their annual charity Bike Run. The entire City of Lowell extends its deepest appreciation to the Bernatos for giving 25 years of dedicated service and linguisa to the community, given the 7th day of January 2014 by myself, Rodney M. Elliott, the mayor, vice chair, and all members of the city council. Thank you and congratulations.
I want to thank a lot of people, but I'm going to make it short and sweet. I want to thank the City of Lowell for giving me a chance 25 years ago. I came from the North Shore, so it was a big change for me down here, and I'm glad I came. I want to thank all my customers because, of course, I wouldn't have a restaurant without the customers. And also, I want to thank my lovely wife for putting up with me. I work three shifts per day. And we raise two kids. And it's not easy, so anybody wants to start a restaurant, there's a lot of work. And again, I want to thank everybody, especially in this room, for everything, and that's it. Good night.
Good night. Thank you very much. Moving on to item two, city clerk's portion of the agenda. The minutes of the city council meeting December 10th. Minutes by Finance Subcommittee on the 10th as well. Environmental Subcommittee minutes of December 9th. Are there any questions on those minutes? Entertainer motion to accept and approve by Counselor Leahy, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. To place on file, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, so ordered. Next item is a communication from the Animal Control Division regarding updated license and vaccination of all tenants, cats, dogs, and ferrets. Any questions on this communication? Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Mercier. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Item number four, city auditor, communication regarding motion on response regarding retirement Any questions on that report, Counselor Mercier?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to know what prompted this piece of information? Did someone make a motion to...
Your ma-
I'm saying it's a bad thing.
No.
It gives a good summary of the motions we all made, but did someone request that?
Your mayor did, in a prior-
Oh, you requested it.
In a prior role.
Oh, I see.
Right, did you want to speak on that, Madam Auditor?
No, I just was going to say that the mayor had requested it, but I think the way that it was put in the packet, it wasn't my report. My report had been in the week, the meeting before, so it was just the retirement returns.
Because I'm wondering, why would you be responsible to know all our motions and present-
See, I didn't put that in. That was not mine.
Okay.
Mine was just the retirement returns.
Okay, because I thought this was, how did this relate to this?
No, that wasn't me.
Not that I'm not happy about it. Whoever did it did a good job. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Malinazzo?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, through you to the city auditor. The report indicates the return was about 12 and 1/2 percent year over year. How does that stack up against the, you know, the major indexes like the Dow Jones Industrial or NASDAQ?
Actually, it's within the 2 and 1/2 percent.
It was, okay.
It was.
Okay, great.
It's like, the whole world took a dive in 2008.
Correct, right.
You know, and then what's happening if, when we're using the five-year smoothing technique, we finally picked up the losses, all of the losses for 2008. So, come the next actuarial, we'll be picking up again.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Motion by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Malinazzo to accept and place on file. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Skipping down to the city managers. Oh, let's hold that. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get into city manager's portion of the agenda, would it be possible to suspend the rules and take something out of order? Because there are a few people here that would like to speak and, you know, we don't want to torture them too much by keeping them here all evening, so if I could, and that would be the motion 27 and 28, we could take them both together.
Okay, motion by Counselor Mercier to suspend the rules to take items number 27 and 28 out of order, seconded by Counselor Belanger. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. We'll go to item number 27. Motion by Counselor Mercier, request city council go on record in support of returning the city manager to, city major to be placed at JFK Plaza and next Christmas season. Seconded by Counselor Rourke. Counselor Mercier?
I think it's-
Do you want to just read the second one of the same, the second motion?
Yes, thank you.
Item number 28, Counselor Mercier requests city manager find ways and means to establish a fund for residents to donate to the restoration of the mangers' statues, by Counselor Mercier. Seconded by Counselor Samaras. All those, on the motion, on both motions, Counselor-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's only right that those that registered to speak could come before I speak. Thank you.
Judge Kumazalas?
My name is George Kumazalas. I live at 241 Remington Street, and I am here at the request of Counselor Mercier. I express my personal sentiments about this moving of the manger to her yesterday, and she asked me if I would speak before the council expressing my concerns. I fully support 100% Counselor Mercier's motions, number 27 and 28, to have the manger moved back to City Hall or JFK Plaza, and I will explain why. I also fully support Counselor Mercier's motion to have a fund created, and I personally would donate to that fund. I remember as a child, my grandmother used to walk us from Dummer Street past Cardinal O'Connell Parkway here to City Hall, and we were going to go see Panahia and Feuli and the Maie, which in Greek is translated into the Holy Mother and Jesus, and the magicians, the wise men, the three wise men. And as little children, my sister and I would look forward to this. It was a beautiful experience. It was an educational experience. It wasn't a religious experience, although it has religious overtones, of course, but it was an experience that reflected our common culture as Lowellians, the tradition. That manger has been there for decades, for generations of people have enjoyed going and seeing that manger. So, on that reason, I would contribute to this fund because it hits me personally at home. And I'll try to make this short because I know that George can be long-winded, but I strongly believe that whoever made this phone call to the city, to Mr. Marshand or to the city manager, or whoever wrote a letter and complained, I think they're standing on shaky ground. I really feel that, as I explained to Rita, this is beyond a religious separation of church and state issue. I really feel that we have a precedent set here of a work of art. It was, a poem was written by Paul Marion, our poet laureate, if we have one. A painting was made by Mr. Jarvis, my own personal friend, Vasilis Jarvis, of that poem and of the manger. It was written about in the Lowell Sun a week or two ago. There was a big article. This is a precedent that the people of this community, whether they be Christian or atheist or whatever, have put this relic there, this work of art, which has set a historical precedent, a cultural precedent, a civic precedent of a tradition of every Christmas seizing, season, having this manger there where people can go and enjoy it for what it is, irregardless of its religious overtones. And now, some people here might not like what I'm about to say. They may be surprised and shocked at what I'm about to say, but I'm saying this for the benefit of the law department because we all know that law hinges upon the splitting of the hairs of a ganat, of a technicality. And in this instance, I believe that this technicality may work in the City of Lowell's favor, which is this. Everyone thinks of that manger as a Christian diorama, as a Christian creche, as a Christian manger. And I am here to tell you that technically speaking, legally speaking, I personally do not believe it is even a Christian manger. We live in a city of ethnic diversity, and we pride ourselves on a city of multicultural and multi-religious and multiracial diversity. We are a microcosm of the United States. We are a microcosm of the world. People from all over the world come to the United States, they come to Lowell. And Lowell prides itself on being this welcoming to immigrants, on open arms, everyone comes here and we're all Americans and we all share in this great experience. That manger is actually pre-Christian. And I say this because if you look at the manger for what it is, what do you see? You see a barn out in the woods with animals. Pagans and naturalists can relate to that, a barn in the woods with animals. The Israelites were commanded by God to worship for 40 years out in nature, carrying the Ark of the Covenant and the Ten Commandments and the Tent of the Tabernacles in nature. God wanted them to be one with nature. He did not want them to be like the other nations. He did not want them to have a king. He did not want them to have a temple. But God relinquished, because God's kind of a soft-hearted liberal, and over time, he let King Saul become the king, and he let Solomon build the temple. But it wasn't supposed to be that way in the beginning, and I'm sure your pastor will confirm this. So, this natural tradition goes back to the Native Americans who believed in the one true God. They called him the Creator and the Great Spirit, before most of our ancestors were even baptized as Christians. So, they worshipped nature. Now we move on to the Mother Mary and Joseph and Jesus. Were they Christians? No, they weren't Christians. They were Hebrews, Israelites. They weren't even Jews. Mother Mary and Elizabeth, who was the father of John the Baptist, who baptized Jesus, were Israelites. Joseph was not even Jesus's father. He was his paternal guardian. If you're a Christian and you believe our faith, and I was raised in the Christian religion, Jesus's father is God. Mary was immaculately conceived to be a clear vessel, and Jesus was miraculously born. His father was God, the way Anakin Skywalker's father was the Medichlorians, Darth Vader's father. It's parthenogenesis, they call it, a virgin birth. Not only that, but in the Christian church, you have to get married before you can have children. It is anathema. It is taboo to have children out of wedlock. You can go downstairs and get a marriage license and get married, and that's fine legally, but not in the eyes of God. You have to get married and have a priest bless you and raise your children in the body of Christ. Were Mary and Joseph married when Jesus was born? No. They were betrothed. They were engaged. They were not married. They didn't go to the second ritual. Mary and Joseph were just engaged. What does that make Jesus Christ? This is why a lot of Jewish people do not accept Jesus as legitimate, because Jesus Christ was an illegitimate child. I won't use the word. It gets even more interesting. To be Jewish, your mother has to be Jewish, right? In Jesus's bloodline, he had Ruth. He was his, Ruth was Jesus's great-grandmother. She was the grandmother of Mary. Was Ruth Jewish? Was Ruth an Israelite? Was Ruth a Hebrew? No. If you read the Book of Ruth in the Bible, Ruth was a Moabite. Ruth was an Arab. That made him illegitimate. That's not Christian. And now we move on to the three wise men. Were they Jews or Hebrews or Israelites? No, they weren't. They weren't Christians. They were magicians. They were sorcerers. They were Magi. They came from Babylon and Persia. They did not practice Christianity. They did not practice Israelite monotheism or Judaism. They practiced magic. They did astrology. If you're a Baptist minister, you're not supposed to have anything to do with astrology. It's un-Christian. So, what I'm trying to say here to the law department is this person who complained, because they were offended by this Christian manger, in reality, it's not even Christian. It's far more beautiful than that. It's multiracial. It's multicultural. It's multi-ethnic. The Christians can relate to it. The Muslims can relate to it because they're people of the book. The Jewish people can relate to it. The pagans, the new age, all of them can relate to it. And this person who was offended by that and complained to City Hall, I'm offended by them. I'm offended by them because they're trying to compare apple to apple. And we all together are like a giant pumpkin, and they're like a little grape. They don't have an established church like a Christian Science or an Immaculate or a Holy Trinity. They're just a lone wolf individual complaining about this tradition that offends them, and that bothers me. I think this is a golden opportunity for the City of Lowell. Instead of putting away the manger and hiding it in embarrassment in the issue of political correctness, we should embrace the manger, the way we should embrace Jewish people to put a menorah there, or Muslims to put a Koran, or Hindus to put a Krishna, or the Buddhists, the Cambodians, to put a Buddha, and allow our multiculturalism to shine and be what we are. As Abraham Lincoln said, "The better angels of our nature." Instead of excluding, we should include. And I really feel strongly about this, that the manger should be moved back. And I agree with Counselor Mercier that that is where it belongs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kumazalas.
Pastor Naja?
If I can just remind our speakers, we have a five-minute rule, and we're flexible-
I'll just do two minutes because he said all, he said things I never heard. So, thank you very much. It's good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. As I started the evening listening to the prayer, the opening prayer, I was so touched by the opening prayer that said, "May we stay faithful to the tradition of the Fathers." I have been a pastor in the City of Lowell for 30 years. My church is made out of 25 different nationalities. We beseech you tonight to seriously consider the request of our faithful public servant for 19 years. We need not to function out of fear, but have faith that God, who created us and who has kept this city to be so wonderful and beautiful, in Him we trust, in Him we live and move and have our being, He will protect us to keep the tradition of the Fathers that made this wonderful nation to be what it is, to be a nation desired by somebody like me 36 years ago, to leave Beirut, Lebanon, and come running for safety and for tradition and for beauty. Today, as I travel the world, I see the manger everywhere being respected by all religion. Even from the Middle East, where I come from, even Muslims honor and respect the manger. We need to trust God that He will continue to bless our city. As we honor His Son, please consider prayerfully and faithfully to bring it back. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend.
Kristina Cavallo?
Hello, my name is Christina Cavallo, and I was so afraid that I was going to be the last one to speak, and now I am. Thankfully, the Lord's moving me and the Holy Spirit has moved me that, yes, everyone's talked about many of things, but I wrote something different. And I promise that I will only take two minutes of your time. I'm here to speak about the manger, of course, the removal, and I was saddened when I noticed it gone, but I didn't pay any attention to it really because I'm so busy moving around and doing this and thinking about this and that, that I didn't take a minute to think about it moved, until I saw it when I went to Enterprise Bank and I passed by the church and I saw the manger there. And I said, hm, that's funny that nobody said anything in the Lowell Sun about the manger being moved. So, I said, I'm going to have to ask about that, but I didn't. And it was after Christmas, I forgot about it, until I saw what the Lowell Sun had written. Rita Mercier was saddened by it, and that's when I took the time to think about it, and I was saddened by it too. But that's how we work in this country and in this world. We're getting so busy and so fast that Jesus is getting moved away and pushed aside, you know, and we're not noticing it. And if we don't pay attention, he's going to be gone before we know it. This country, first of all, the United States was founded on Judea-Christian values. If Judge Washington was alive today, he'd be mortified of what has happened. Every battle, anything that was going on in those times was prayed to, prayed to God first before they made any decisions. And that's why this country was so blessed, because we trust in Jesus, and he loves us and he blesses us because we love him. The documents were written in truth, and these men were willing to die for their beliefs, as well as the freedom that came with it. If we don't pay attention, we're going to lose all our rights before you know it. You know, we don't want to lose our Christianity, and because of peer pressure, political peer pressure, you know, I'm not here to talk about politics really, but I'm here to fight for my Lord and Savior, and I will work for him, and I'm sure that I will be put down, laughed, and scrutinized, however so is Jesus. And this is the only way I can prove to the Lord that I love him. Please, let's keep our tradition. This is why Lowell is so unique. That's why we, we don't have any debt, we didn't, the taxes weren't raised or anything. It wasn't because of great men that went to school and had educations, because Jesus found favor upon us, and that's why we are so blessed in this city. So, let's keep the blessing going. And I don't make a lot of money. I'm on a fixed income, but I would be more than glad to give my money to the Lord to fix that manger. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cavallo. Anything else, Mr. Clerk?
No more speakers registered.
Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion is being brought forward for many reasons. First, this motion at the time that I would have brought it in was the most appropriate time because it involved the present holiday that we were celebrating, that being Christmas. We were celebrating the birth of a great leader. Call him a prophet, call him Jesus, call him the Christ Child, whatever you want to call him, the holiday was about the real meaning of Christmas. It was about putting Christ back in the holiday, putting Christ back in Christmas. I want to also thank St. Anne's Church for offering room at the inn for the manger, the stable, the creche, the nativity scene, whatever you wish to refer, the shelter that housed the baby Jesus. Although I am grateful why it ended up, ended up there at St. Anne's is beyond me. Were we afraid of being sued? Because if we were, this is one lawsuit, I would have no objection to fight all the way. Other communities around us have no problem putting their manger on town property, so why should we be afraid? There was a question of the day in the Sun newspaper which asked why this happened, where 66% of the people checked off political correctness run amok, and I totally agree. Enough with running amok, enough of being afraid, enough of being bullied. In my opinion, I believe that the majority rule. There is a true majority that believes that the manger is and still would be a part of our Lowellian tradition, just as it was when I was a child and when they, when they were young. It's ironic how simple it is for people to trash God, and then we wonder why the world is going to hell with shootings, killings, violence, and drugs. It's strange how lewd, crude, vulgar, and obscene articles pass freely through cyberspace, but public discussion of God nativity scenes is suppressed in the schools, the workplace, and now government. It's bizarre to think that one simple letter can move a nativity scene and crush the tradition and beliefs of a majority of people, and we succumb to it. Not me. I don't worry about what other people think. I worry about who that figure laying in the manger represents. I fear what he thinks. I want to know who on this council is with me, and I will request a roll call vote, which brings me to the next motion. I want to start a campaign whereby residents can donate money to sponsor the campaign to restore the stable figures to the fine quality that they should be in, so that when the light is finally shone on them, they look magnificent. I don't care who does the work, but by next Christmas, which is this year, I want the manger back to its original place and in magnificent shape. This is our custom. This is our right. Oftentimes, we highlight the beliefs and customs of different cultures. This time of year, it is our custom. If anyone else would like to join us as well and be over there with the menorah, whoever, I don't object to that, but let our beliefs also be highlighted also. This motion is to have my colleagues go on record in support of returning the stable back to its original place, where it has been ever since I was a small child, to City Hall at the JFK Plaza, and in this case, this year. I want the figures repaired and a bright light as strong as the North Star that guided the three wise men and the shepherds to the manger to be shown on the manger, to remind the city what the real meaning of Christmas is all about. I know some time ago, Mr. Manager, you told me the manger would be put in a better place, a more central location, but I was unclear to what that, what was transpiring until one night, I was downtown looking for the manger, and I couldn't find it. When someone told me where it was, I went back and saw that it was in total darkness, and I was appalled. In my personal opinion, I believe that the stable is in total darkness so that we cannot see the derelict and dilapidated condition that the figures are in. Therefore, in an effort to restore the integrity of the nativity scene figures, I will donate $100 to match Joanne Bastine's $100 check that was at my door yesterday, that Paul Belair donated $100, and $50 from Christine Cavallo, that's $350 already, to stop the restoration process. It's not being paid for from city funds. It's being paid for by private donations. And probably, we can call, I'll call tomorrow, see if there's a Lowell bank that will allow us to set up a nativity restoration fund that will be very helpful and let the tradition continue. Thank you.
Further discussion on item number 27? We'll take these separately, Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
She's requested a roll call. Further discussion, Counselor Belanger?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly support the motion set forth by Counselor Mercier, and I do want to thank the speakers for coming out tonight. Excuse me, they enlightened us here tonight in a very spirited manner, so thank you for coming out. But, you know, we've all been in the city for a long, long time, and we've all seen this display- this display out in front of City Hall for many, many years. And I myself always viewed it as a celebration of Christmas, and that's no disrespect to anybody's religion or faith. So I think it belongs there, I think it should be there, and I would like to see it for this coming holiday season. Let's not forget, we have thousands and thousands of people who gather in front of City Hall for the City of Lights Parade. That's where the parade ends, right there in sight. So that would be yet another attraction for the parade goers and city tourists. I think it belongs there. But a concern I do have is that I know it was there for many, many years, but it did experience some theft and/or vandalism, as shameful it is to say. So I don't want to be rallying, I don't want these hardworking people to pay out of pocket for funds, I don't want the community to be rallying for funds and then have to go back to them and say it was vandalized, we need more money. So I support it, but if the manager could find a way to deter theft and vandalism by making this more secure and safe, that would be great. I support it either way, but I just don't want anything happening to this display if we, again, have all these hardworking folks come forth, pay out of pocket for this. I don't want to be going to them a second time asking for money, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Kennedy.
Can I just ask through you to the city manager? Mr. Manager, I think the manger was moved probably before I came back on the city council. Can you explain to me why the manger was moved?
Mr. Manager?
Actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor, it was actually moved this year for the first time. We did receive complaints last year and consulted with the case law, and there have been a number of cases where communities have been found to violate certain civil rights by having manger displays on city property. There are circumstances where it has been allowed when it's part of a much larger type of display. So we sort of took our chances last year and left it where it was, but this year we made the decision that we were essentially playing a form of Russian roulette, just waiting for a lawsuit to be filed against the city, and that we felt that a more appropriate place that would still be within the downtown area that people could view the manger, those that wish to view it, because it does have certainly some tradition that goes with it, would be at St. Anne's. St. Anne's is a historic church here in the city. It really ties back to the formation of the city. The mill owners themselves created St. Anne's, and we felt that that was an appropriate place for it. It would make it more visible for people that were walking through the downtown area. Our own observation is it probably does need better lighting. We also recognize that it needs some additional work to restore it, and we're looking to, so a number of people have come forward in the past with promises of donations, but for one reason or another, that didn't come through. We've actually done some footwork on this and determined that, we've spoken to some people, and the estimated cost is about $50,000, I believe, to, no, I guess that's $50,000 to replace it. But there is a time span to make the necessary repairs, and we're trying to work with some people to coordinate that effort.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that this was the first year that it had been moved.
Yes.
Was there a communication to the city council that it was going to be moved, or was there, I don't remember anything about this.
I can't recall whether there was a communication of that sort, but, you know, we moved it this year.
Okay. And so if you knew, and I think all of us know that there are communities that keep a manger on town property in other communities, why did we change? Where did the objections come from that made us make a decision, or the administration make a decision, to change the site of the manger rather than to just leave it where it was?
Sure. The difference was that in the locations where it has been upheld, you could have it, it's part of a much more, as I said, it's a much more comprehensive display with snowmen, igloos, Santa Claus, reindeer, perhaps a menorah, something along those lines. It wasn't, this was really just a standalone structure in the downtown area, on City Hall Plaza, on city property. We did last year seek to put some other displays up, but we were not successful in that effort. And so this year, again, rather than take the chance on that, and at the same time, I think it's important to note that we did not simply say, it can't go up. We said, where can it be put that it would have the same presence in the downtown area that people could go see it and simultaneously not be on public land? So this was an attempt to satisfy all interests.
Okay, but was there a group that threatened to take us to court or something if the manger was put up there?
I believe we received several letters from people that had indicated this.
Different groups or from just?
It was a group, it was individuals.
Okay. And were those individuals all from the same group, or were they from different?
Again, there was no indication that it was a group, it was just individuals.
I have to think that there are other communities where there is a manger in place where they don't have a grouping of other displays beyond the manger.
There may be.
And that it works out okay. On the other hand, there was an item on the news today where the Oklahoma State Capitol, which has a Statue of the Ten Commandments, somebody wants to put a Statue of the Devil there as well. So, you know, I can see, but I'm not sure that they'll be successful, and I think that, you know, I think this is a good motion and that we should kind of stay with it, and we have 10 months to work on this. So if the Law Department thinks that there is, that we need to be a little bit more careful or diligent about doing it, then we have plenty of time to do that, it seems to me.
Mr. Mayor. Councilor Malinazo. Councilor Samaras.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support the motion, and I want to thank Councilor Mercier for bringing it forward. And what I'd like to say too is that if you recall back probably four years ago when we opened the council sessions with the Lord's Prayer, we were actually approached by probably almost every denomination in the community, in Lowell and the Greater Lowell community, to come up with a prayer more representative of the various churches and synagogues and so forth in the city. And the fact that Reverend Najam is here tonight speaking, I would ask that if, again, this motion gets approved, that between now and the holiday coming up in 11 months, that we get this working group together to be, to put in place a more representative display, if you will, in order to deal with the issue that I'm sure the solicitor and what Councilor Kennedy just talked about in Oklahoma City doesn't end up, you know, following us with this vote, if you will. So I would encourage Reverend Najam and other folks in the Lowell area to work on making the display more representative. I actually was surprised to see it in front of St. Anne's, but at the same time, I wasn't offended because I really thought from the standpoint of foot traffic that more people were actually walking by the manger and enjoying the scene. But again, I'll support the motion to bring it back, but with the caveat that we work with all of the groups in the community to make it more representative of the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Councilor Samaras, and then Councilor Mercier.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. I'm a traditionalist by nature, and I look at it actually from its historic point of view, right, it has a historic value. And Lowell is a gateway city, and we have people from many lands with many beliefs. And perhaps maybe this is the time to amend the motion, it's a good motion, but to amend the motion to be more inclusive at this particular time and ask the Law Department if they can come up with a way to ensure that every group can be represented in some way on City Hall lands or on our city lands. I think the time has come to look at it from a holistic point of view and to be able to ensure to everyone that we are a nation that celebrates everyone's beliefs and we allow everyone to have their beliefs. So rather than a push and shove type of situation, I think we are a nation that's very accepting, and I think we should show that, that we are a city that's very accepting and allow the manger to be there, but allow, whether it's a menorah, kwanzaa, whatever celebrations that are important to our different ethnic people take place.
Okay, so you're making another form of amendment to that motion?
Yes, I'd like to do that.
Amendment, could you just state the amendment?
Amendment to be more, to be inclusive of, as the city manager stated, a more comprehensive plan to allow other ethnic groups to be represented.
Okay, so motion will be to adopt this with the amendment that the manager work with the Law Department to come back with a report on ways and means to accommodate other groups. Makes sense? Okay. Second one, Councilor Malinazo. Councilor Mercier?
I don't have any objection to that. I'm talking about tradition, and if the Jewish people think and know that a menorah is their tradition, I welcome to have a ceremony to support that or whatever they want to do, that's fine. We hear about separation of church and state. According to the Constitution, that translates to mean that the state cannot establish a religion. We're not establishing a religion, we're celebrating a tradition. Just yesterday morning, we all stood in front of our desk and we raised our hand and Judge Pearson says, "Do you swear to uphold the laws of which you are responsible? So help you God, so help me God?" That's what we said. Are we going to take that out of that now? Every time you turn around, they're taking, they want to take, "In God we trust," off the money, "I pledge of allegiance, one nation under God," we can't even do that. If you don't want to salute your flag and say that, then find a country where you want to go. But the fact that I'm bringing this forward is because I'm tired of people writing a letter and we're going to hide in a corner and shake and shiver. I understand that we try to avoid lawsuits, but sometimes you got to stand up and say, no, I'm not going to back away from you. And this is what the gist of this motion is, and if it includes other traditions from other religions, other groups, other diverse people in the community, yes, I welcome that as well. I have no problem with that at all. If you want to celebrate and bring forth your tradition, I would allow that, just let us allow our manger, our stable to be put back where it belongs. It's ours, and that's my motion, and I still would like a roll call on it.
Okay, we still have a couple more. Councilor Leahy, then Councilor Rourke.
Thank you, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a good motion, I'm going to support it. Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, you had stated that an attempt was made for other groups or faiths for maybe to, you know, showcase during the holiday season. Did the city reach out to those groups?
It was more trying to do more of a secular display as opposed to religious. We looked at last, it was a year ago, we looked at perhaps using floats from the City of Lights Parade, staging those, again, just sort of encasing the whole plaza, but that was unsuccessful. But we didn't actually reach out to any other religious groups, no.
You know, with regards to what other councils have said, you know, terrific points, it is a centralized place in the city, maybe it could be something where it could be set up for the holiday season where, you know, you could bring your family, your children to not just, you know, the Christian and Catholic faith, but for all faiths, or maybe something that could be looked into for the future, and maybe that also protects the city from any litigation. Thank you.
Solicitor, do you have something? Madam Solicitor, you want to add?
Yes, thanks. A couple of things. First of all, it isn't necessarily a case of just trying to avoid a lawsuit, but rather to follow the law. And actually, the example that, Councilor Mercier, you had raised just a moment ago of taking the oath, that is the oath that all of us take in our prospective positions, to follow the law. And that's really what this is all about. I think it's very clear that as we have the manger set up right now, it is a violation of the law, not at all unlike action that this council has taken to comply with the constitutionality with respect to the makeup on the vocational school. With respect to bringing other things aboard, whether it be other, you know, religious symbols or other secular symbols, the manager is right, there has been really a case that has gotten into that. It's not something that Massachusetts federal courts have really adopted, and I don't know that that's something that necessarily would legally fly. But what we do right now, I can tell you, is not constitutional. It is a violation of the law, and by moving it, you're keeping it, you're not removing it altogether, it's not disappearing, it's going to be in the downtown, and that was really the attempt. I would say every year, probably historically, the city has gotten from time to time letters of residents who are upset by a religious monument, a religious display at City Hall and in close proximity. The other thing that Councilor Kennedy had alluded to, there have been communities that have put up permanent displays, such as the Ten Commandments, and the result there is now you do have other groups of various religious beliefs, Satanists is one that he had mentioned, that now want to erect alongside the Ten Commandments a statue of Satan, under the premise of what we've been talking about right now, that once you open up government public space to various religions, it's opened up in its entirety. So in short, there is a lot of time to take a look at the issue. I think that there are a lot of issues to be looked at and to be taken seriously, and I don't know that there is necessarily an easy fix if we want to have it right back to City Hall again.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Elliott.
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councilor Leahy.
Yes.
Councilor Martin.
Yes.
Councilor Mercier.
Yes.
Councilor Malinazo.
Yes.
Councilor Rourke.
Yes.
Councilor Samaras.
Yes.
Councilor Belanger.
Yes.
It's nine yeas.
Nine yeas, motion passes. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 20, next motion. Okay, well, can we just dispose of this, Councilor Mercier's second motion? We do have to go, we have to go on executive session. Roll call on the second one. Councilor Mercier, this is to, this is to find ways and means to establish a fund for residents to donate to the restoration of the manger's statue.
Yes, and I have checks, but I'll hold on to them. We'll establish some sort of a fund at the bank if this passes. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mayor Elliott.
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councilor Leahy.
Yes.
Councilor Martin.
Yes.
Councilor Mercier.
Yes.
Councilor Malinazo.
Yes.
Councilor Rourke.
Yes.
Councilor Samaras.
Yes.
Councilor Belanger.
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Nine yeas, motion carries. Okay, being after 7:00, we have a public hearing scheduled, it's a utility public hearing. Second reading by title, National Grid Underground Electric Conduit at 580 Chelmsford Street. I'd like to open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anybody from National Grid here? No? What's the wish of the body?
Motion to delay recess till they show up.
Till they show up? I mean, typically, we have somebody here for these public hearings. So we will close the public hearing, or do you just want to delay it until someone from National Grid comes? Councilor Kennedy?
Can I just ask, was this public hearing put off because of the other meetings that were, was this supposed to be scheduled for December or something? Would that be the?
I believe it was.
All right, so maybe that made it just a mix-up with scheduling?
Right.
No, this, Councilor, this was originally scheduled, it was first before the Board on December 10th, and it was scheduled for today.
Tonight, okay.
Okay. Mr. Manager, do you have something to add?
I have nothing.
No, okay. Motion to delay by Councilor Mercier, second by Councilor Rourke. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, so moved. Okay, Councilor Mercier, did you have another suspension of the rules?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. If I could have a suspension of the rules to allow two motions to come in by Councilor Madi-Lari, 25 and 26.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilor Mercier, second by Councilor Malinazo. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and motion carries. Rule Rules are suspended. We'll take up item number...
25.
Yep. We'll take up on item number 25. The motion carried from the previous meeting that, that was canceled, it's by Council Laurie, former Council Laurie, request city designate Patacet Street from Aiken Ave to Father Morissette Boulevard as veterans memorial walkway honoring those casualties from the current or past students of UMass Lowell or any of its prior entities. Motion by Council Mercia, second by Council Samaris. Council Mercia, you want to offer this on behalf of the counselor?
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Council Mercia and the City Council for suspending the rules and allowing me to come up. This motion was originally, I originally went to the veterans group here in the city when they were gonna remove the textile street bridge, or the University Street Bridge, which is a veterans' bridge in a way of honoring those 10 students. I've been assured by the city manager and the chancellor that they're gonna find a suitable location to honor the 10 or 12 veterans who were named for that bridge. In the meantime, I've talked to the veterans group in the city, and they approached me and asked me to come back with the idea to name Patacet Street from, say, Lashar Park to the Boulevard to honor all the students who were casualties from the universities. The university, whether it's low-tech, low-state, always had a large ROTC. Its biggest club right now is its veterans' organization, and many of the students who went through those halls were casualties of the war. So, I'm here in behalf of, really, the veterans' group to ask that we not rename the street Patacet Street, but just name it a walkway, which is, I, I think, fine. The new path behind Lashar Stadium, the new walkway was named for the Yankee Division, so that this, that this would parallel that, that area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Laurie. Further discussion? What's the wish of the body? Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is an excellent motion. We cannot forget those students that left the university to go, it was the Technological Institute at the time, and they went to the war, and they were killed, and in honor of them, which is the textile bridge was actually in honor of them, so, which is the University Avenue Bridge, which is now the Howe Bridge. So, we can't forget them, and we should put a nice stone there in, in memorial to these people. So, they, they gave the ultimate sacrifice, they died for, for our freedom, and we owe them something.
Okay, so, we do have a Veterans Council in place to review these, so, entertain a motion to amend this, to refer this to the manager to work with the Veterans Council for a report and recommendation back?
Almost.
Okay, so moved by Council Kennedy, second by Council Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion by Council Mercia to take item number 26, motion to suspend the rules by Council Leahy, second by Council Malinazo. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Rules are suspended. Item number 26 is a motion, again, from the prior meeting, from Council Laurie, request city council vote to send a letter of support for Senate Bill S-1610, Homeowners Flood Insurance Affordability Act of 2013. The letter is to go to Senator Warren's office. Motion by Council Mercia, second by Council Leahy. Council Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion speaks for itself. A couple of years ago, after Katrina, they've changed the regulations here in the country, and the insurance rates are going up dramatically. The Army Engineers Corps has changed the maps throughout the country. Here in Lowell itself, I was representing some residents over in Senaval, about 270 houses who were behind the levee never been flooded, but are paying flood insurance because their source may back up. Downtown Lowell, we have many condos, 5th, 6th, 4th, paying flood insurance. What this bill is going to do is slow down the changes made after Katrina, give the Senate and the House time to, to, to look at the bill and come up with a reasonable bill across the country. Lowell, I don't have the figures in front of me, I believe is number 2 or 3 in the state in total payments on flood insurance. And when you consider the coastline in Massachusetts, and the city of Lowell and the residents are paying outrageous fees, I ask that the council support this measure. Send the letter to Senator Warren to help with her efforts to at least slow down the regulations until Congress can take a real good look at the flooding bill throughout the country. Thank you.
Further discussion on this motion? No further discussion. Seeing motion by Council Belanger, second by Council Kennedy to refer this to the law department for report and drafting of the letter to re, re, bring this back to the City Council. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. I was on, on the line with Senator Warren's office before I came in a meeting. I'll call Ventala, and I'm sure they'll be very happy with the results. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Council Laurie. Council Leahy?
Thank you. Could I just, just one other item that's, will go very fast, if we could suspend the rules for number 30, there's somebody registered to speak on my motion.
Motion to suspend the rules by Council Leahy, second by Council Belanger. All those in favor to take item number 30, the purpose to take number 30 out of order, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries to suspend the rules. Item number 30 by Council Leahy. Request city council support, School Committee Man Gignak, Gignak's motion requesting the superintendent to develop a drug abuse prevention and awareness task force for the Lowell public schools. The task force shall include, but not limited to, department staff, city officials, public safety officials, health officials, and members of the public. The task force should work to develop strategies to address drug abuse issues throughout the district. Mr. Clerk, someone registered to speak? A, a second on the motion, second by Council Kennedy.
Register Speaker Robic, Gignak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Council Leahy, for bringing this forward. This is one of my final motions as a school committee member. Two years ago, myself, former Assistant Superintendent Ann Murphy, and State Representative Tom Golden met to form a group to work on this most important issue, and we've been meeting informally for about two years now with the support of this council, the school committee, and the delegation. I know we've been working on motions from Council Rita Mercier, Council Leahy, and this entire body, so this is just a way to formalize that group to continue our efforts to initially begin in the schools and then to work on a citywide. So, thank you, Council Leahy, for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gignak. Council Leahy?
Thank you. I just, I thought this was very important to, to bring to the council's attention all the work that School Committee Man Gignak's done over the last two years, along with the manager's office and State Representative Tom Golden. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're aware of this, we support it, and it's, it's a big issue in the city, and it, it should be, should have our full attention. Thank you. So, I ask everybody if we could support this. Thank you.
Council Belanger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion, I commend Council Leahy, I think it's a great motion. You know, many of these issues we're having in the city with violence are drug-related. I don't think it's no secret, and this is, a task force such as this is certainly part of the solution, so I support it very much, and I commend Council Leahy again, a great motion. Thank you very much.
Further discussion? All, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. We're returning back to regular business, city communications from city manager, responses to city council motions and requests. Council Kennedy?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, regarding AF, I guess, on the, on the city manager's portion of the agenda, and this doesn't have too much to do with AF, but it's my understanding that some of the kiosks are, are still showing up as saying that it was snow emergency, and so they won't accept money. Is that correct?
I, I will have to check on that. I, I have not heard that, but we'll follow up on that.
Okay, and I guess it's been like that for several days, so...
Okay.
And I, and I knew, that means that we're losing revenue, which I knew you would be very concerned about.
I do not like that.
Okay, so can we get something back on that?
We'll check on that.
You know, a little more seriously, I guess, if, you know, that could, if that's gonna happen from time to time, I mean, there must be something wrong with the software or with the kiosks or something, there's gotta be, there must be a problem, right?
I, I think there's a new, there's a new rollout of, that, that technology was not in place up until now, so there may be some wrinkles that, with that, and I, you know, I, Jim Trup has been in touch with me on some communication the last few days, and I haven't, I didn't see that, I may have missed that, but I'll, we will follow up on that. And it, clearly, if, if something like that, you know, to any of the councils or to the, to the public, the public likes to, probably appreciates that the, it's not being billed, but it, it, if, as soon as we get that type of information, we can follow up on it very quickly, so...
Okay. My understanding is that last year, maybe, the kiosk didn't say "snow emergency," right?
They didn't, that was the problem.
So, this is kind of a new thing?
Correct.
And so, we have this on, but maybe it's, we kind of shut it off. So, that's right?
It seems like, it seems like that might be an issue, so we'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on most, City Manager portion, Council Malinazo?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, through you to the City Manager of the Solicitor. Looking at item K under the communications council motion of Council Elliott regarding the petition to have DPD report and recommend regarding the discontinuance of Worcester Road. My question is, where does now this go from here? We have a report from Adam Baiki to the City Manager indicating their opinion of the abandonment. They're recommending that less driveway space off of Andover Street, and maybe move the houses a little closer to, to Andover Street. I believe Representative from Corbett Development is here this evening, and I'm just curious as to what the next step is. Is this to refer it back now to the Solicitor to have a proper vote drawn up? Or, again, a number of us attended meetings with the Belvedere Neighborhood Group over the last few months, and I think we all got to a position where this was actually recommended by the neighbors, by the residents around Worcester Road and Andover Street. So, my question is, what's the next step? Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Baiki?
Yes, good evening, and welcome to the new city councils, who I haven't had the pleasure of being with until this evening. The, it's really up to the council to choose what the next step on this is. Our recommendation is that if you choose to go forward with a, requesting a vote for the abandonment, that because there has been so much interest on the part of abutters, many of whom are not direct abutters to the portion to be abandoned, that the radius of folks who get, who are notified of the public hearing be a little bit larger, more typical of a development proposal, which is typically 300 feet, rather than just the direct abutters, which is typical of abandonments. But if that is the case, and it's the wish of the council, then I think the recommendation, if you make the recommendation to prepare the vote for the abandonment, then obviously we'll, we'll support the law department in the effort to put, bring that forward for you.
Would it be appropriate to put that in the form of a motion to refer this back to the Solicitor and take the recommendation of Assistant City Manager Baiki to kind of make the net bigger and bring additional abutters into the, into the discussion?
Okay. Motion by Council Malinazo to refer this item back to the City Manager and the law department and report recommendations, second by Council Mercia. Council Mercia?
I did attend the last meeting with the neighborhood group, and it was at the Long Meadow, and you were there too, Mr. Council Malinazo, and they modified it and made some recommendations and changes to the satisfaction of the residents and abutters, and it seemed to be appropriate. So, this is a good motion right now to do that.
Council Kennedy?
Just to the maker of the motion, is the intent to abandon the entire street or just a segment of the street?
It's my understanding the entire street.
The entire street?
Dr. Don, it actually, I didn't know until Council Mercia and I were at the meeting that it actually runs from Andover Street down to the Merrimack River.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Still on the City Manager's portion of the meeting, Council Leahy?
Thank you. Just to the manager, the answers on a couple of my motions, the one on Baldwin Street and Princeton Boulevard, the response, it was a good response, and it just says that we're gonna stay in touch with city, with state officials. That seems to be one of, a troublesome intersection in the city. It's outdated with the lights, and a few of the neighbors have called about it, accidents there. I think most recently, a car went into the house on the corner, they're in the process of rebuilding their whole front porch. So, if we can just keep an eye on this and do what we can, I was in touch with Representative Murphy's office, he said he'd gladly take a look at it and see if we could expedite it to try to fix that intersection, so. And then the other item was the, the motion that I had on with Council Kennedy for the quarterly reports on the council motions. Excellent job with this. Talked to Connor Baldwin about it too, and it's a nice job, it gives us a lot of information on how many motions by meeting over the past couple of years, and breaks everything down. The only suggestion I had made is, you know, once there, the motions are answered and satisfied, we could color code them, or we could color code the ones that aren't answered, and that way, it just gives us a good idea of where we're at.
Sure.
So, which motions are completed and which aren't. But that's an excellent tool for us, and I thank you for that. And I don't know if this is the time or not, but I, I did have a couple of questions about the snow removal. Is that something we can do now, or do it at a later date, at the end of the meeting?
Why don't we just take up suspension of the rules at, at the end of the meeting?
Okay.
If that's okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on council motion, City Manager portion of the budget, I mean, portion of the meeting? Seeing none, motion to accept and place communications on file by Council Martin, second by Council Leahy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, so ordered. Moving on to item number seven. Number seven, communications from the City Manager, request approval for out-of-state travel for one for the Lowell Police Department. Entertain a motion to approve by Council Malinazo, second by Council Samaris. Question, Council Samaris? Nope. All the, roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Malinazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaris?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Motion carries, nine yeas. Item number eight, vote authorizing the manager to accept a gift and enter into an occupancy agreement with River North LLC and the Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank for 97 University Avenue, the Community Police Precinct. Motion to waive the full reading by Council Kennedy, second by Council Leahy. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, so ordered. Second reading by title, authorizing the City Manager on behalf of the City Lowell to accept the gift pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and enter into an occupancy agreement by and between River North LLC, a Massachusetts Limited Liability Company, and the Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank, a Massachusetts banking company organized under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, with the principal place of business at 1 Merrimack Street, Lowell, Mass., for the property located at 97 University Ave, Lowell, Massachusetts. What's the wish of the body? Questions?
Move approval?
Move approval, uh, roll call.
Move approval, a second.
Okay. Moved by Council Malinazo, second by Council Mercia. Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Malinazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaris?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
That's nine yeas.
Nine yeas, motion carries. Item number nine, vote authorizing manager to execute a lease, Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lowell, Inc., 679 Middlesex Street, for the Community Policing Precinct. Motion to waive the full reading by Council Belanger, second by Council Kennedy. All those in... All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Second reading by title. And City Council, authorizing the City Manager on behalf of the City Lowell to enter into a lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lowell, Inc., for 67 Middlesex Street, Lowell, Mass., 0851, for the property located at 679 Middlesex Street, Lowell, Mass. It was a wish of the body.
Move approval.
Moved to approve by Council Mercia, seconded by Council Martin. Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Malinazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Nine ayes.
Nine ayes. Item number 10. Vote, declare surplus property, surplus and enter into an applicable PNS agreement or other documents with respect to the disposition of parcel B at 1087 Westford Street, and acquisition of parcel A and C as part of the overall development of property at 150 Wood Street. Second, motion to waive the full reading by Council Leahy, seconded by Council Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, second reading by title. And City Council, authorizing the City Manager to declare surplus and enter into a purchase and sale agreement and/or any other documents with respect to the disposition of parcel B at 1087 Westford Street, Lowell, Mass., and acquisition by the City of Lowell of parcel A and parcel C as part of the overall development of property at 150 Wood Street, Lowell, Mass. Wish of the body. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In looking over this issue here, there is question about a very old historic building built in 1673, and being a person that respects history and old buildings and things that should be restored, I had concern as to that particular building. There were those that said, let's move it, we'll move it, and I thought it's probably not safe to move such a building like that because we don't know how fragile it is, and that would be an effort in futility. It probably would disintegrate. But the fact remains that we get information about this particular vote, and it says that the developer proposes to construct two new commercial buildings at 150 Wood Street as well as an associated site improvements while also preserving and restoring the existing historic home. And, and do that at its current location on Wood Street on this site, so I think that's the way that it should be. I would move approval. Thank you.
Motion to approve by Council Mercia, seconded by Council Leahy. Question, Council Leahy? Second on the motion. Uh, roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Malinazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
That's nine ayes.
Nine ayes. Motion carries. Item number 11. Vote, authorizing the manager to execute an agreement between the City Lowell and National Grid relative to the use of poles for hanging decorative banners, including decorative lighting. Motion to waive the full reading by Counselor Rourke, seconded by Council Samaras. All those in favor please signify by saying aye, and the opposed, so ordered. Second reading, and City Council, authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement between the City Lowell and National Grid relative to the use of poles for hanging decorative banners, including decorative license, lighting. What is the wish of the body?
Move approval.
Move approval by Council Mercia, seconded by Council Malinazo. Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Malinazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
That's nine ayes.
Nine ayes. Motion carries. Item number 11. Vote, authorizing the manager to execute an agreement between the City Lowell and National Grid relative to the use of poles for hanging decorative banners, including decorative lighting. Motion to waive the full reading by Counselor Samaras, seconded by Counselor Rourke. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, this is to be sent to a public hearing on January 25th. I'm sorry, Council, uh, City, Madam Solicitor?
Apologize, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, this may be something that we want to, we're gonna be having an executive session anyway, and, and so prior to actually sending out this modification to the existing ordinance, we may want to take this matter up as, under the heading of pending litigation and include it under the executive session.
Okay, so, uh, motion to delay sending this to a public hearing?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Kennedy, seconded by Counselor Rourke, to delay pending discussion in the executive session relative to litigation on this matter. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Item will be delayed.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Kennedy?
If there's no objection, I would move that we take items 13 through 16 together.
Any objection? Motion to take item 13 through 16 by Council Kennedy, seconded by Council Mercia. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Okay, motion to accept the, all these communications by Council Kennedy, seconded by Leahy. All those, Council Leahy, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, communications are accepted and placed on file. Moving on to item number 17. Vote to accept a gift to the library for $5,000 from Digital Federal Credit Union. Motion to waive the full reading by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Council Samaras. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, so ordered. Authorizing the City Manager on behalf of the City Lowell to accept the gift of $5,000 for the use by the City Lowell Pollard Memorial Library. Questions? Counselor Malinazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question, but under full disclosure, I just wanted to report that I'm a member of the Pollard Library Foundation Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Malinazo. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would move that we send a letter of gratitude for that generous donation. Thank you.
Motion to approve and sending a letter to, to the Digital...
You're welcome.
To the Digital Federal Credit Union. Right. Council Martin?
Just curious as to whether this was any, some sort of special program or solicitation or something that Digital's doing with the library. Just, we haven't seen anything comparable to this before, but...
I believe this was just a, just a donation that they, they reached out and made to the library.
Okay, right. Good for them. Thank you.
Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Malinazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
That's nine ayes.
Nine ayes. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 18. A vote establishing the Disability Commission Revolving Fund. Again, motion to waive the full reading by Counselor Malinazo, seconded by Counselor Rourke. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion passes. Second reading by title, and City Council, authorizing the establishment under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 and One Half, of a revolving fund in the City Treasurer's Office using funds provided a transfer from the Parking Enterprise Fund disability account for expenses relating to helping the disabled in the City of Lowell. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as you, as you're well aware, being the, in the last term, being the City Council's representative to the Disability Commission, we made a decision a couple of years back to set aside funds from our Parking Enterprise, the monies that come from the handicap fines that we collect. At the request of the Disability Commission, we, we made a decision to set aside a portion of $20,000 each year for the use by the Disability Commission. They contacted, obviously working through the mayor, and contacted my office, requesting that we explore the possibility of, means of setting up, or having a means whereby the money could roll from one year into the next so that they could accumulate funds in order to take on larger projects from time to time, rather than have to spend that money all in one year. And we looked at a couple of different options, including acceptance of a state statute that is a little bit more restrictive to us in terms of our overall city needs, so we crafted this revolving fund and working with the Auditor's Office and the Law Department whereby we could set aside the money in this account. It'll be available to be utilized on an annual basis or carried over from one year into the next with the conditions set forth within the, the vote, and that should provide the Commission with the needed funding to take on some of the larger projects that they seek to accomplish. I want to thank the mayor and the members of the Disability Commission for the work that they've done on this, and I think this will be very helpful to us. We're also looking at, working with the Disability Commission, putting together a more comprehensive accessibility plan for the city. Frank Singleton, our Health Director, also our ADA coordinators, and working with, looking at some work that the City of Somerville has done, we're going to be essentially using some of those same ideas, conducting that accessibility study, accessibility audit here in the city, and we anticipate that there'll be some very large expenditures of funds likely necessary in the years moving forward to make the city even more accessible, and we're looking at the Parking Enterprise, those monies coming through the Parking Enterprise from the handicap fines as a means to fund that through the payment of debt service in our capital budget. So we should be able to do more in terms of addressing the, the needs identified in that audit.
And discussion? If there's no objection from the body, I just wanted to say, the manager said it well, but I've been the representative for the last two years on the Commission of Disability, so I just, this is a good thing. I mean, sometimes there've been years where money has expired and reverts back into the general fund this way, when there are multi-year projects, that money will remain in those, in that, in that particular fund, as the manager indicated, and audits being conducted to, you know, to see where we, where the money, what issues are, where the needs are, and this will enable the disability to, to track these funds, actually quite frankly, as well as ensure that they're not, you know, that they're not reverted back to the general fund every year, so this is a good thing, so. No other questions? Roll call? Motion to adopt. Motion to accept by Council Belanger, seconded by Council Kennedy. Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council, Council Malinazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
That's nine ayes.
Motion carries, nine ayes. Second item, item is, item number 19, is the actual transfer of funding into the, into the fund. Vote, transfer $20,000, $20,000 from the newly established Disability Commission Revolving Fund. Motion to waive the full reading by Council Samaras, seconded by Counselor Rourke. Second reading by title. Order to, order to transfer funds to the newly established Disability Commission Revolving Fund, amount of $20,000. Discussion? Motion to accept by Counsel Martin, seconded by Counsel Leahy. All those, roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Martin?
Yes.
Council Mercia?
Yes.
Council Malinazo?
Yes.
Council Rourke?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
That's nine ayes.
Nine ayes. Next portion of the agenda, a report, Subcommittee. No Subcommittee's. Let me just let members know that I am working on Subcommittee's. I hope to get them out as, as soon as possible, but as we have several mayors in, in, as colleagues, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of work, it's a challenging task, so I hope to have them out very soon, the end of the week, and hopefully in the packet, but shortly thereafter. Okay, next item on the agenda, general petitions. Item number 20, under miscellaneous. Good Deed Electronics at 581 Bridge Street, request two 15-minute parking signs, one on Seventh Street and one on Bridge Street. Entertain a motion to refer to the traffic engineer by Council Malinazo, seconded by Council Mercia. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Item number 21, again under miscellaneous. MVP Testing LLC, request permission to install an overhanging sign at 262 Merrimack Street. Entertain a motion to refer this to the Law Department for a proper vote by Counsel Kennedy, seconded by Counsel Belanger. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Item number 22, under miscellaneous. Giolinda Betancourt, request to remove one handicap parking sign from 4 Agawon Street to 71 Barney Street. Entertain a motion to refer to the traffic engineer by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Another miscellaneous petition, number 23. Jacqueline Pagan, as guardian for Norma Pagan, request one handicap parking sign at 15 Manufacturer's Street. Motion to refer to the traffic engineer. Oh. Council Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just amend that to be a 60-day trial.
Okay. Motion to amend by Counsel Mercia to amend to include a 60-day trial period, seconded by Counsel Leahy. All those in favor, the motion please signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Item number 24, under utility petitions. National Grid, first reading. Electrical main installation on Industrial Ave. and Stevens Street. This needs to be sent to a public hearing on February 4th. Motion by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Malinazo. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Under motions, we've done 25, 26, 27, 28. We'll go right to item number 29. Counsel Martin. Motion by Counsel Martin, request City Manager have DPD meet with Economic Development Subcommittee to develop business incubator districts in appropriate locations in the city. Seconded by Counsel Belanger. Counsel Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I guess, is a couple of sources of origin. The, the main one, I guess, is no secret, all the activity that's going on at the University of Massachusetts Lowell, as a research university, you hope as a local community to capture some of the benefit of the companies that grow out of that research, although it's not exclusively, I guess, necessary that a new company that is relying on new technologies in our educational institutions grows from the university. So that's why I said other locations. Clearly, I think some locations near the university might benefit from this. I don't know exactly all the benefits you would have in such an incubator district, but I think what we want to do is create incentives where companies are looking to be around other similar-type companies. That might be a zoning density bonus, for example. I think our zoning is pretty friendly to these operations as it is, but I think it's worth a fresh look to see if we can increase the incentives for those companies that grow out of new technologies and are emerging. Sometimes they don't have a lot of money for rent, so if we had some incentive programs for landlords with, they offer reduced rent, they might get some increased density or
other benefits through the zoning code, things the city could encourage to have these companies locate here. So I'm open to other suggestions for ideas, which is why I asked it to go to the Economic Development Subcommittee. I think, you know, some of us talked about this in the last election campaign, and I think it's something that ultimately is going to benefit Lowell residents. I think certainly one of the bigger problems we have is, in the recovering economy, places like Lowell recover toward the end of the economic cycle, where the first to go down and the last to come back. And certainly, we have people here who still need jobs, they are unemployed or underemployed, and this is, I think, an opportunity to help improve that situation. I think the other problems we have, in large part, stem from the lack of economic activity or employment opportunities. So this is something that I think we can do a little bit to encourage economic growth and have companies locate in Lowell, jobs for people in our city and our region.
Thank you. Council Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to, I think this is a great motion. I think that all of us, or many of us campaigned on wanting to see more economic development in the city over the next two years. I think this is probably a good way to start, and hopefully, over the next two years, the Economic Development Subcommittee will be one of the busiest subcommittees on the city council.
Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Right.
In the opposed, motion carries. Moving to the executive session portion of the agenda. Council Leahy.
Could we just suspend the rules at this time, just to bring up issues with the past snowstorms?
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Council Leahy, second by Council Kennedy. The purpose is to discuss issues with the snow removal of the last snowstorm. Council Leahy.
Thank you. Through you, the manager, I just wanted to bring to your attention, I'm sure you saw some of the emails we got this week from different constituents around the city, so downtown, Christian Hill, Belvedere, the Highlands. I would just ask that, I don't think this needs to go to a subcommittee, but I just would ask that we look at it. I don't want to take away, I know that the storms were difficult, and I'm sure everybody worked hard, but I'd like to see us be a little smarter about the way we attack these snowstorms, maybe. I brought up certain issues to you, you know, just my own personal observation, just some of the downtown area where parking spaces are still filled in with snow. You know, I'd like to see if there's a way we can expedite the downtown while we're doing the rest of the plowing through the storms. Make better use of the equipment. My personal observations of just seeing, you know, the bobcats, I don't know if they're private or parks, but I don't think that they should be at the schools during the snowstorm. I think that's a piece of equipment for after the storms. So if we could just take a look at it, and I'm sure we could be a little bit more efficient, it may end up saving us a little bit more money. You know, the storms did fall at difficult times of the day during rush hour. It is New England, we've got to put up with a little bit of snow and the cold weather, and we attack every storm differently, but if we could address that, I'm sure we'd be able to keep everybody a little bit happy, the residents, and especially the downtown businesses. Thank you.
Counselor, thank you, Council Belanger.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager, now that we're on the topic of snow removal, it pertains to the motion. Mr. Manager, do you have any idea where we're at, what we've exhausted to this point out of the snow removal fund? Maybe too early to determine, I understand, but I wonder if you have any idea at this time?
I don't know at this time how much we've spent. Snow this year has come much sooner than the past few years, so, you know, I know we're ahead of where we have been in prior years. Over the last several years, we've been adding money to the snow removal account so that we're not caught behind the eight ball. Many communities purposely underfund that account because it's the, it's really the one account that you can carry over from one year to the next. Our philosophy has been different. We've been trying to put more money into that account each year so that we're not caught in that way, but I don't have a number, I haven't gotten a report on that as of yet, being January 7th, it's only really a month in. So we should have that, though, probably next week for you.
Okay, that'd be good. I realize it's a little early. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Further discussion on this item? Council Rourke.
Through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, is there a threshold, a certain storm where you would do removal? For example, on the weekend before Christmas, we had some kind of snow.
Right.
Parking downtown was very difficult. Is there, is there a certain, you know, criteria that has to be met for us before a decision is made whether to remove snow?
Well, the biggest problem we had, maybe the best way to answer that, and I hope it does answer the question raised, is that this weekend, of course, this weekend got quite warm on Sunday. We kind of watched the weather. It doesn't make a lot of sense to, as I'm sure the council would agree, to go out and remove snow if it's going to be, end up melting in a few days, a couple of days, anyway. We had the same situation in a December storm, actually, and we did go out and do a little bit more snow removal that weekend, even knowing that the, because it was right before Christmas, knowing that, even knowing that the temperatures were going to go up. One of the problems I know that we did run into this year, this past storm, the Thursday night into Friday storm, was that that was a very long storm, and the crews went from early on Thursday all the way through to late Friday afternoon, and simply we just couldn't expect them to go back out on Friday night into Saturday to remove snow. I think we were going to try to get out Saturday night. Of course, it got quite warm before it got quite cold again, and we saw quite a bit of melting downtown. But generally, we try to look at the weather, we try to look, see, sort of predict what other storms are coming, to know whether we have an opportunity to get in and take care of it. There is a lot of thought that goes into that process, but it's not, it's not a case where we say, okay, we've got 12 inches of snow, let's go out and get rid of it. We really take into consideration the timing of it and the future weather forecast. And we try to do it so that it allows for the businesses to have parking in front of their locations, and at the same time, you know, one of the best times to go out and do this snow removal is at night. We don't want to interfere with the restaurant traffic or the special events. We made a mistake, there was a mistake made a few years back where we were out there doing snow removal, particularly on Market Street, and I know that there are some establishments on Market Street that were affected by this, that we had quite a bit of traffic coming through from the songists that same night, and traffic got all jammed up. So we were trying to do it, and we were sort of cotton. And then we don't want to interfere with the residents down there as well, we don't want to interrupt their sleep. So a lot goes into that, and it's not a, it's not always a simple decision for us, but we're always looking for the best possible way to do it.
Did you see the city's emails, you know, with the 3:00 AM to 8:00 AM?
Right.
Of the removal? Is a decision made that, you know, you do Merrimack, you do Market, you do, is there a certain, again, is that by storm or by area, how you go about where you remove the storm? Only speaking from experience of, you know, we were down there the 20th, 21st.
Right.
You know, a couple of days after the December storm, weekend before Christmas.
Right.
You know, it was, you know, there was snow everywhere, you know, and I understand, you know, certain things need to be met first, but it was very difficult parking, even on Merrimack Street, for example.
Right.
So was it, you know?
That would be the place we'd hit first, actually, is Merrimack Street.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that item? Council Leahy.
Just on one other item I forgot to bring up on the manager's portion.
Okay.
It just, well, it's important to bring this up because the Say Something, See Something, Say Something campaign.
Council Leahy.
I know, thank you. I know we read it, and it's in our packet, and I did want to end on a positive note that, reading this, and I think the campaign's a good campaign. It's, it's something that, you know, everybody can take pride in the city, there's numbers there to call. Anything you see, trash, broken, anything, anything that's broken, lights that are out, trash around the city. It's one way that everybody can help out and alert the city staff so we can address these issues quickly, and it looks like, you know, obviously, there's a lot of work put into this, so I did want to recognize the manager and his staff. This is something that we've all been asking for, and here it is, and I hope this works. It looks like it's going to be a positive thing for the city. I just want to say thank you. If the manager wanted to speak on it.
Mr. Manager.
Well, thank you, thank you, Counselor, and I appreciate the kind words. The work was really done by Mr. Marchand here, pulling it together with the staff from DPD and the Police Department and DPW. It's a program that we, you know, we say it all the time, that our best ally in dealing with many of these issues are the, is the citizens of the city. They see things, and they see things, I'm sure, that frustrate them, as I see things, as I drive around the city, that frustrate me. Obviously, I have a little bit better access to this, the city organization than they do, or seemingly have better access. In fact, they have just as much access, and when they see something, it's important that they let us know about it immediately so that we can fix it, rather than be frustrated by what they see out there. The sooner they let us know, the sooner we can do something about it. So thank you, and congratulations to Henry on a great job putting that together.
Thank you.
Okay, both, that's already reported on file, so moving on to, oh, I'm sorry, Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing that we're still under suspension and we're thanking people, I noticed we have a new carpet in here, we have a new floor, wooden floor there. I think great work has been done by the group headed by Mr. Harmon from Harmon Wallpaper and Paint. This is transforming into a place where we're not tripping over that split halfway down the carpet, so I want to thank people where credit is due. Thank you.
Very good, I agree. Mr. Manager, if we could get someone in the mayor's office to straighten the carpet, because Council Leahy was in there today, and he tripped over it, so.
Well, one step at a time.
So to speak. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, executive session. There are two executive session motions. Question of Madam Solicitor, want to, both, both will require separate votes?
You could.
There are two motions, so I guess my question, they will, they will require two votes, but we will take both of those votes before going into executive session.
You could do it either way. You could do it as two separate votes, or you could do it as one single vote. However you do it, there'd have to be the roll call. All of the reasons stated would have to be stated up front, so in other words, if you did it as one, it would be condensed into one motion, and then you would have to advise whether you plan on returning to open session or not.
Okay, I believe we're going to separate them. So, Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move through a suspension of the rules to take 32 up before we take 31.
Good.
Because I don't have any problem with going into executive session for number 31, but 32, if there's no objection, I'd like to take that one first.
Motion to suspend the rules by Council Mercia, second by Council Kennedy, to suspend the rules to take number 30, item number 32 up first. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, motion carries. Item number 32, executive session. We have to publicly state the purpose of this session. The session is to discuss contract negotiations with the city manager. Second.
Wait.
Motion, motion to go, address this item by Council Belanger, second by Council Kennedy. Council Kennedy on the motion.
On 32, Mr. Manager, is it, do you have no, it makes no difference whether this is done in open session or executive session to you? Is that correct?
I had preferred to do this in closed session, in executive session with the council, but obviously, this is a vote that requires city council approval.
And so if the vote is not successful, then we would do it in open session?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, when I look at this motion, I've never come across a manager to discuss this and bring it forward in this particular manner. It is my opinion that this motion is a bit premature, and that, I don't know what the hurry is, but you know that better than I do. I don't know, I think it's a little insensitive to three city councilors. I'm not going to consider Council Milonazzo as the fourth, because he has served with you, but three of these councilors have not, and I'm wondering, how do they feel, you know, to support talking about a contract? And I don't know what your intention is on that. So I know that we talk about transparency in government, and in an effort to promote transparency and open government, I would feel that it would be suitable to discuss this issue here amongst the public than behind closed doors. That's my opinion. Maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, I don't know, but that's my opinion, and I'm not going to support going into executive session.
Council Rourke. Council Kennedy.
Through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, is this about your current contract or a potential new contract?
It's actually more about my current contract.
Thank you.
Counselor, Counsel Kennedy.
I guess, I think that if the purpose of your request is to talk about the new contract, then it is premature, because I think you have three new councilors here, the contract, your contract doesn't run out until the end of July. And I called you earlier today to see if there was a compelling reason why we should do this in executive session, and you didn't really have one. I'm somewhat surprised that your response to Council Rourke was that it's to talk about the present contract and not the new con, not a new contract. And so I guess it probably would be, I would like to have the discussion, just because I'm somewhat curious, but I guess without having a compelling reason to do it in executive session, then I would prefer to have the discussion in, in, in open session.
Council Belanger.
Yes, sir, you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank my colleagues for their courtesy. As Council Mercia stated, it may be a tad bit premature, but many of us are anxiously waiting to see the manager's intent as to his future here in the city of Lowell. But I believe it should be done in an open forum. That's what I campaigned for, transparency, and I'm certainly not going to go back on that now, so. And that's no disrespect to the manager, that's just the way I want to govern, and so I believe whether it's an existing or a new contract, it should be an open forum for the city residents to take in and keep informed, so, thank you very much.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, if we're talking about the current contract, would prefer to do this in an open session, and I do have some questions as to the manager's current contract and whether or not, having not been here for the last two years, if we actually, if the council actually did evaluations on the city manager, and whether the city manager actually received a merit increase during that time. So that's something that I think we should discuss and discuss in open session. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Council Leahy, would you take the chair? Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I did see this motion, and I called the solicitor last week because I was unclear as to the intent of it, but, so I, I just feel anytime that we're going in to discuss executive session, there's, there has to be legal reasons, so I went into the open meeting law, and it appears that there is only one, that this motion would fit into, into one of these 10, and that bodies can go into executive session for. And it's number two, and I just want to read it, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations, and I think the word there is negotiations with non-union personnel, or conduct collective bargaining sessions, or, or contract negotiations with union personnel. So questions were asked whether this was going to be negotiations, and I don't believe we're in negotiations, or contract negotiations, so I, I don't believe that the motion is worded and would fit into this particular item or criteria of the executive session under open meeting law. So, you know, plus, if we are going to be conducting strategy sessions, you know, that's for, for the public body, and we don't want to be negoti, you know, that's to do amongst ourselves, and not to be negotiating with the person who has a contract. So I agree, I'd like to, I want to have this discussion in, in public, and I don't believe that we are on legal, that we're on legal footing to go into unless we are negotiating a contract. So, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It seems that there's, that everybody would rather do this in open session, so let's just commence, let's just have the discussion, I guess, is what I would think.
Counsel Martin?
Well, the solicitor, I assume, feels differently, that it's a proper subject for executive session or not, so I guess I'd like at least her view on that.
Solicitor?
Sure. The motion, as worded, and as I understood the purpose of it, was to, as it reads, conduct or discuss negotiation sessions, which is a perfectly proper reason for going into executive session. The... And it also covers, as Counsel mentioned, strategy sessions as well. So, in other words, if you're preparing for contract negotiations, there's certain prep work that needs to be done as well, and that's allowable.
Counsel Martin?
Counsel Mercier? Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Whether it's one of 10 reasons or not to go into executive session is far and few between the fact that if... How many votes do we need? Five? If five people say, "Let's conduct it here," then it's conducted here. It's the majority rules here, so that's what we're talking about.
Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My understanding is that we would do this in open session, and that the purpose would be to discuss the existing contract, rather than a new contract. So, it would be not, it would not be to negotiate a new contract, but it would be a discussion that's initiated by the city manager to discuss his present contract. So, if that's the case, is, does the law department have a problem with proceeding right now on that, in that way?
Having an open session on the current contract?
A discussion on the current contract at the manager's initiation, which is, that's what this would be.
Right. The... And again, it was apparently my misunderstanding, but I, in prepping that for the agenda, I was under the impression that it was for discussions for upcoming contract negotiations. But, in any event, with respect to the current contract, it's, I'm afraid, without knowing specifically the nature of the discussion that would be taking place, it's difficult to say. You can have an existing contract where there may be elements of negotiation that need to be ironed out, and I'm not exactly clear what the purpose is. If the question is, can you, you know, can you have it in open session? Suppose you can, and particularly if the other party is willing to do that. If the other party's not willing to do it, then there would be no discussions.
Okay. I had made the assumption that the discussion was meant to be about a new contract, rather than the existing contract, but evidently, that's incorrect. But, I mean, we're all, we can all ask these questions, but actually, the city manager holds all the answers, because he's the one who initiated this, he's the one who knows what he wants to discuss about the existing contract, and it would seem to me that if he has no, if it's no problem, it's been placed on the agenda at his request, and if he has no problem with discussing it in executive session or in public session, then why can't we just move ahead in public session and have the discussion now? The alternative would be to put it off for a week, I guess, and just... But, it seems that we should hear from the city manager, and then the discussion would be underway.
Counsel, Mayor Elliott.
Elliot.
Trying to decide to call you Counsel or Mayor.
I mean, I like it down here, but it's... Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I guess my point is, there is a contract in place, and the contract is very clear when it comes to any notice, that what the manager wants to do with this contract, and whether it's, whether it's a notice to renew, whether it's a notice to voluntary terminate, or if we don't notify the city manager of our intent, there is actually a rollover period, or there are specific criteria in the event for termination, et cetera. So, I mean, we're really governed by this contract, and no matter what the manager wants, his intention is, he's got to let us know prior. Then, that, to me, makes the decision whether this is executive session material or not. So, it is in his court, but accordingly, we've received no notice from the manager, other than, "Let's go into executive session to negotiate, you know, exactly what needs to be," in my opinion, given to the city council in this session, before we go behind and discuss it. So, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Samaras, Counsel Samaras.
Mr. Counsel Samaras.
To the city solicitor, are you seeing without specificity that we shouldn't go into executive session at this particular point?
No, I was, I guess, answering the question posed by Counsel Martin, and that was that as written, the reason as written does not allow us to go into executive session, and in that case, the as written, it would allow the council to go into executive session, assuming that's what, that's what the purpose was, and that's what we were doing. As I indicated, I had initially thought that it was actually to begin some sort of discussion, strategy session about upcoming contract negotiations, and that would be fine. If it's something other than that, then it may not be covered by the reason that was initially stated in the packet, and that was, I think, answer to Counsel Rourke's question, that it's about the current contract.
Thank you.
Mayor Elliott?
Well, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we discuss this issue, that we have a discussion about whatever the manager wants to talk about here tonight.
Okay. So, motion made, or seconded? Seconded by Counsel Mercier?
Yes, roll call.
Roll call?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Lehey?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
No.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Malanga?
Yes.
Eight ayes.
Well, the motion carries, so it's, so the discussions take place, right? The motion was to have that discussion, so you stay up there until I...
Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Well, first off, let me congratulate all the new members of the city council, and Mayor Elliott, for your election as mayor, and it's been a very good meeting tonight, I think, and I want to commend you for that. I also want to, I was hoping to do this in executive session, because I felt that it was most appropriately done there, where we could have some discussion regarding the content of this letter. But I, if I may, and just, I will read the letter to the council. Dear Mayor Elliott, members of the city council, please accept this letter as my notice of resignation from the position of city manager at noon on March 10, 2014. This span of time provides the required 60-day notice as outlined in Section 3B of my employment agreement with the city of Lowell, and allows for a smooth transition. I'm very proud of the accomplishments that have occurred during my tenure as city manager. I've been very fortunate to have a great team of department heads and employees that have made the administration very successful in areas of our finances, operations, and economic development. While there is much work ahead in cementing the progress that's been made, I believe I have largely accomplished the goals that I set out on July 31, 2006, when I was sworn in as city manager. With a new city council in place, I believe it is a good time for me to pursue other endeavors, and for the city to move to a new period. I wish to thank the city employees that do such an outstanding job on behalf of the residents of the city. I wish to thank all of the city councilors that I have worked with during my seven and a half years as city manager for their support and counsel, and I want to thank the citizens of the city for their support during my time as city manager. It has been a pleasure, and truly an honor, to be the city manager of such an amazing and special community. I want to thank everyone for that.
Motion to accept the communication placed on file?
Motion made by Mayor Elliott, seconded by Counsel Malanga. Any further discussion? Counselor Martin?
Yes. You know, I think, well, this is disappointing to me, and I'm sure many others, but, Mr. Manager, I think, I speak for great many people, and I want to thank you for your service here as city manager in the city. You know, I understand these jobs have a shelf life, they're very demanding, that it takes a lot out of any individual to serve in the role you've served, and I think certainly, you know, I don't want to get into specific accomplishments, I suppose we'll have another time for that. But I agree with your assessment that a great deal has been accomplished, and I think many of us are happy to serve with you, and think the city will be a better place because of your service, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Counsel.
Anybody? Counsel Milonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I too want to echo Counsel Martin's sentiments. I certainly have enjoyed working with City Manager Lynch. I actually was the mayor when we negotiated your contract back in 2010, and, which was done, by the way, in closed session. We were meeting down in the maid's reception room, and you were in your office, and I think we actually had a good contract from the standpoint of both parties, there was a give and take on both sides, and I'm disappointed we're not going to be doing that again, quite frankly. And I think that you and your administration, and the city councilors you've served with, brought this city forward over the last seven and a half years, and I want to thank you for your work. I know you worked very hard. The city is in a much better place today than it was when you became city manager, and I just want to publicly thank you and acknowledge your good work on behalf of the citizens of the city. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Samaras?
As a new counselor, I just want to express my disappointment on receiving this letter. I was looking forward to working with you and your team on creating an even better Lowell. I think your services that you gave to the city were outstanding, and we are in a better place because of your work. So, I just want to wish you well, and sorry to see this happen.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Mercier?
I just want to say as well that I want to thank you for all your hard work that you have done here. I'm not going to deny that we had our differences many times, but overall, your financial skills were top-notch.
Thank you.
You did do some things that I requested, walk across Broadway Street for the seniors and the residents in that area. I knew you could do it. I told you, you can do it.
I won't tell you how you, people, how you told me I could do it.
I know that. It wouldn't be ladylike, but the fact remains that Amoresco and all the savings of the energy that's taken place at the landfill, it's not Mount Trashmore anymore, it's generating electricity, and we're very, very proud of the work that you have accomplished here. I wish you would have communicated better, that's okay. This water under the bridge, but I want to honestly say that you have made many improvements in this city, and I feel bad just the same. I hope it was nothing I said, but thank you.
It's nothing you said, Counsel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manager, I've only been here for two years, but I do think, and I recognize this, and I think I've mentioned this to you before, that I think you were, you did a very good job as a fiscal shepherd for the city, bringing the city through the recession. And certainly, I think every member of the law city council appreciates that we had a zero tax increase for both of those fiscal years. Maybe in the first of the fiscal years, we didn't agree that we should have one, but I think by the second fiscal year, we were all in agreement that it was a good thing. And with that in mind, and the idea that Mr. Moses' position is also vacant, and that you'll be leaving just before the, it'll be budget time, I'm just wondering if, what your recommendations are for preparing the budget for the next fiscal year, or whether you've made any plans in that regard.
Mr. Manager?
Actually, the budgets are, the, Mr. Moses and I coordinated all of that before he left, and the budget documents are already out to the departments, they're compiling those, and they will be submitted. I hope to be able to at least have that assembled, not crafted, because I believe that should be the next city manager's responsibility to do that. There are issues with regards to filling the CFO position that have become apparent to me, that, and that should probably be an appointment made by the next city manager, is their right-hand person, and, but certainly, there will be, I've given thought to this, that I am going to be asking each of the departments. When I came on as city manager, I reached out to all of the departments in the city and asked them all to put together transitional documents for me, so that I would have data and have information coming in. I'm, it's my intention to ask those department heads or those departments, and the newer department heads perhaps, to assemble that same type of information, assemble their budget documents. The capital budget is also being worked on, and that will all be put there, ready to go for the next city manager.
Counsel Malanga?
Yes, through you, through you, Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you. There's a thank you certainly in order here, Mr. Manager. You will leave at a time where we're fiscally sound, and, excuse me, you should be remembered for that. I want to thank you. You reappointed me twice to the zoning board of appeals during your tenure, and I want to thank you for your confidence, and your service here for the city of Lowell has been remarkable, and my goal is to make this departure as amicable as possible, and you can promise that from me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
Anybody else? Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, I've only been here one day. It's a little quick, but, no, a serious note, the, you know, we certainly didn't agree on a lot of things, different philosophies, but I do appreciate the budget, where you have taken it from and to where it is, its context, it has been recognized for, you know, for the changes, for the improvements, and I certainly continue to learn from, you know, municipal finance. It's an evolving field, it's, it does get more technical, so I certainly can appreciate that. I also think that healthy debate is a good thing. We're not always going to agree on all things, and we had spirited debates, and I think both of us took it in that vein, so, you know, I wish you well. Some good things clearly have been done in the city, and as I mentioned yesterday, we're going to build on those things, and so, I wish you well, and I just wanted to say those words as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If you take the chair.
Chair recognizes Counsel Lehey.
Thank you. I too want to just express my sincere thank you. It is kind of disappointing, I thought you'd be here a little bit longer. I do appreciate everything you've done, the budget has come a long way, the effort you put in to every, every day that you come to the office. It's not an easy job, appreciate the time, we've known each other for a long time, the past year, professionally here, together, working together, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Motion to accept the communication placed on file by Counsel Milonazo, seconded by Counsel Malanga, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed. Next item in executive session, publicly state the purpose of this session, and the session is regarding matters of pending litigation, including the Habit OPCO decision, that's the methadone clinic, public discussion of which could have a detrimental effect on the city's position. Roll call.
Could I, and I also move we adjourn from executive session.
Motion to go into executive session and adjourn following executive session by Counsel Martin, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Lehey?
Yes.
Counsel Martin?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Milonazo?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Malanga?
Yes.
That's nine ayes.
Nine ayes, motion carries, we'll...
Mr. Mayor, as a reminder, we do have the business of the panhandling issue to... Is that going to be in executive session as well?
That's under, Madam Solicitor?
Sorry, that's under the matters of litigation.
Okay, that's under matters of litigation, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's under, Madam Solicitor?
Sorry, that's under the matters of litigation.
Okay, that's under matters of litigation, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Motion to go into executive session has been ordered, and we will adjourn from there. Thank you.